We are entering into the budget work session for the proposed 2022 budget. All right, Tammy and Dr. Smith, take your way.
Great, well, we're not going to belabor the point. We're going to start right off with the big picture. And I am going to try to figure out where's the best place to put you all. I'll put you there. There you go. Ms. McCourt, I'm just going to leave it with you right there. And you can kind of talk us through the big picture. And just tell me when to change the slide.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. The superintendent's proposed budget for FY '22 is, of course, presented as balance. This budget includes a request to the county government of local funding increase from $109.5 million to $118.5 million for an increase of $9 million for recurring costs. It also includes a request to use of fund balance in the amount of $1.9 million for nonrecurring costs. And when we get to those categories, we can go through the specifics again. As we closed FY '20, we put all of our available funds back to immediate use in the FY '21 budget. Therefore, there are no S and CPS savings currently available to support nonrecurring items in the FY '22 budget. The decrease in state revenues reflects a significant decline in student enrollment, and the existing state funding formula provides funding to school districts on a per pupil allocation. The slight decline that you see on the screen in February mirrors our actual impact aid amount received in FY '20, and the decrease in other revenues reflects the decline in interest income that we've been discussing recently that we've been currently experiencing. Overall, the budget reflects an increase of $2 million or a 0.87% increase over the FY '21 adopted budget. Next slide. Whereas the previous slide reflected the total budget inclusive of the one-time nonrecurring costs, I thought it would be valuable to also show the toe overall increase in the recurring operating budget net of the planned use of fund balance for the one-time purchases. So looking at the second to last line on the slide, backing out the planned use of fund balance for one-time items of $6.1 million in FY '21 and the $1.9 million in FY '22 leaves us with a net increase in the recurring operating budget of $6.1 million for an extremely modest 2.72% increase over the FY '21 adopted budget. Next slide. It's important to note that what is being requested in this budget and local funding support is over the legally mandated maintenance of effort. The maintenance of effort calculation requires that the amount of funding that is provided per pupil in one fiscal year is maintained no less than that amount in the next fiscal year. So if you recall, the current year's student enrollment determines next year's funding basis. So walking through what this would mean for St. Mary's, the FY 2021 local funding amount of $109.5 million is divided by last school year's September 30 student enrollment of 17,138 students to arrive at a current year per pupil funding of $6,392. This per pupil funding amount is then multiplied by this school year's student enrollment as of September 30 of 16,724, and this includes those students that receive a waiver for the immunizations, to arrive at the legally mandated minimum funding requirement of maintenance of effort of $106.8 million, which would result in a decrease in county funding of $2.6 million. However, there's been preliminary conversations about potential legislation to hold school systems harmless for enrollment declines recognized due to the COVID pandemic. If that should happen, the whole harmless amount would be a flat funding for FY '20 at the FY '21 level of $109.5 million, and we are requesting $118.5 million of recurring local funds, which represents $9 million over the current year's budget for FY '22. Next slide. So these slides, if you don't mind, Dr. Smith, we'll skip over the next two slides and just jump into categories. So the administration category, we have requested an increase in this category of $170,485 or a 4.8% increase. In each one of the categories, we have included funding for the negotiated agreement, which includes step increase and 1.75% cost of living adjusted. Within the administration category, we have received several questions from the board members. So I will begin there. The first question we received was from Mrs. Allen, specifically page five referencing the supplemental budget detail, which is in your binders. And specifically, the question was the accountant line, there was an increase from 2 to 2.83 FTEs, but a cost increase of $113,000. So I can provide clarification on that. Within the accountant line, for budgetary purposes, it actually also includes the budget analyst. So there are four positions that are included in that line. So I'll provide additional clarification on that document going forward. I apologize for that. On page six, you can actually see that there are 2.83 accountant FTEs and one budget analyst FTE. We did have a new accountant that was just hired and will be starting next week, and this is the Fiscal Services Insurance and Retirement Accountant. All of the accountants have also been submitted as part of a reclassification with a reclassification cost to be borne by the restricted fund under the grant administrative costs. So you'll see instead of four FTEs there, it's a 0.87 to represent a 13% of one of the FTEs to be charged directly to the administrative costs of the grants. And the details for the requested reclassifications can be found on tab P of your binder. So the second question we had was for the purchasing specialist line on page seven, that it reflected a $10,000 increase. We had staffing turnover this year, so we had a new hire in that position, which resulted in a $3,500 increase in that account, plus the steps and COLA associated with the positions within that category totaled $6,484.
Great, thank you.
The next question from Mrs. Allen as well. On page nine, under Human Resources, the supervisor line shows an almost $40,000 increase attributable to a 0.37 increase in FTE. So we will have a new supervisor we just proposed in this budget, shifting from the coordinator line up to the supervisor line. And this position is actually split between unrestricted fund and the restricted fund with the remainder of the position being charged to administrative grant costs as well. So the $40,000 increase represents the 37% of that position. Additionally, on page nine, Mrs. Allen asked the question, Human Resources Coordinator, are there two positions in this? And I'd like to provide additional clarification on that line as well. That budgetary line actually includes three positions. And if I can direct you to page 10, you'll see that there are two coordinator C-SMAC positions, but we've also incorporated the budget for the new Human Resources Generalist within that account. So I'll provide further clarification on that account coding in the next supplemental budget. So thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Great, thank you.
Are there any additional questions that the board members have for the administration category?
Mary, Rita, Jim? Jim's gone.
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Questions, thank you.
Moving on to the final administration category, we have a requested increase of $417,314 or a 2.4% increase in that budget. This budget also includes a cost of step increases and a 1.75% COLA associated with the negotiated agreement. Mrs. Allen posed the question, the charter schools zeroed out their copier rental, but I didn't see an alternate option or plan. And actually, what happened with the charter school was we could not finalize their final bottom line of their budget until the rest of the superintendent's budget had been finalized. So in fact, they have not finished providing us the detail of their budget. So instead, what we've done, and that was for no part of their own, it was simply a timing issue. What we have in fact included in their budget was a $406,000 increase, and you'll see that that is included in the overall budget. But once they provide us the details, you will absolutely see an increase in that copier line. And I believe that this is a question further along about an increase that you see in a substitute account as well.
Right, okay.
What we did was we made sure that the accurate dollar amount was reflected in the overall superintendent's budget.
Great, thank you.
Excellent. And the next question, I'm going to turn over to Dave Howard to address, and this question is from Mrs. Allen as well. And the question is, the software hardware maintenance category, oh, I apologize, this question comes from Mrs. Bailey. The software hardware maintenance category, I have an understanding of most of the uses, but everything after the school messenger, including computer solutions. Can you describe what those users and uses are, Mr. Howard?
Yes, I'd like to. I've implemented some category forms for my notes. A lot of those topics that you were asking for, Miss Bailey, are like IT security items, improvements there, some maintenance contracts that we have for our web application for our help desk. A lot of the other ones are for the data center or the VMware and the Dell items for our storage area network that run everything that we do internally. We also implemented a new service for virtual desktop interface for primarily the tech center students who are having difficulties doing their assignments because of the students who are having difficulties doing their assignments because of the requirement on the local desktops. This service we just put up is allowing students to go to do AutoCAD assignments from their home, so this is a recurring maintenance cost to support those items. The other one's like the Red Hat, when you see that, that's for our web servers that we have here internally. Sorry, I have to turn, let that voice be.
Okay.
And this is, I covered every other item. Oh, and the other one is the Wireless Management System, the Aruba bundles now, a package that we use for providing our wireless services for our internal customers and external, and it's also allows for us for troubleshooting that. The JAMP item is for our Apple management system, and the Duke solution is for our hosted facilities for reservation systems. So I think I addressed most of those items in that line. I admit it is one that we work closely with the financial department to make sure that we've got the proper amount of funding every year. We spent quite a bit of time on that this year, so hopefully I've answered most of your questions.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then the only other one I had was back up on page 13, the installation of the interactive Is that school-based, administration-based?
I'm sorry, which item?
It's under Contracted Services, and it's for, there was a note in the side, and I apologize, I had it tagged, but I didn't include it in my email to Tammy. It was installation of interactive TVs, there's 20 at $350 each for a total of 7K, and then the Microsoft support affiliated with it was like almost $20,000.
For the smart TV status for our software that we use for the smart notebook for teachers, that's a cost that we've had in the budget for the last seven years, I believe.
Right, okay. And then I assume that then the interactive TVs are just the replacement cost for ones as they are aging out, or?
Correct.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions on the mid-level admin?
No, I don't.
No, no, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Smith, move on to the instructional services category. There's a requested increase here of $2,314,500 or a 2.8% increase. In this category is an increase in substitute teacher wage increases, the minimum wage increase, and the details of that increase can be found within tab R of the binder. Did we submit any questions in this category? First question was, does the public charter school plan for next school year? An answer to that is yes. This was actually part of the project presented to the Board of Education several years ago, and there's a plan to include 20 additional students, and that is included in their funding allocation for next year, the present budget. The next question was also from Mrs. Baker in this category, who plans to begin in January for the Chesapeake Public Charter School. I am concerned because some of her funds comes from fundraising, fundraising for the most part is not going well for our organization. And Dr. Montgomery said that yes, we are planning on providing Chesapeake Public Charter School update for education in December, and she will specifically ask them to address fundraising. Are there any additional questions in this category?
No, but thank you for answering my question.
Yes, ma'am. Hi, Dr. Smith, if we can move on to the next category, textbooks and instructional There's a requested increase in this category of $52,484, representing a 2.2% increase. The highlights include the elementary math consumables and instructional software. We do have a planned use of fund balance, which is not reflected in the chart on the left on the screen, but that includes $1.7 million use of fund balance to support the continuation of school-based technology refresh of $1.2 million, which includes network switches, network interactive smart TVs for classrooms, teacher laptops. Additionally, there is the digital textbook subscriptions, which totals $409,600 as a planned use of fund balance for Spanish, American, and US history. I did not have any submitted questions from the Board of Education within this category. Are there any additional questions at this time?
I don't have any.
Within the other instructional cost category, we actually recognized a decrease of $100,825, or a 6.2%, and those decreases were predominantly in the areas of conferences, mileage, non-public placements, and contracted temporary services. As discussed at the last presentation, we worked with the departments to try to reduce categories by 10% into their areas. Are there any questions? Category.
I don't have any.
I don't either. I have to say, Tammy, the notes on the side provide a lot of explanation, so don't think that you're not getting any questions because we didn't look at anything, it's just that it's very complete, so any questions we may have are immediately answered with the note section.
Right.
And just to pause in the middle of this to voice my appreciation for the work that Ms. McCourt and her staff does, after six years of going through the budget like this, it is a pretty well-oiled machine where we have a lot of, we also have a lot of information later on if we want to go back and historically look at things, because it's been formatted similarly year to year.
And I'll add, just for the viewing public, the notes that they're speaking of is actually a supplemental budget detail, which is in about a two-inch binder full of information for each of the board members, that absolutely is put together in collaboration with the directors. So moving on to the next category, Special Education, we have a requested increase in this category of $169,067, representing a .9% increase that predominantly is for funding for the negotiations. We received no submitted questions from the Board of Education in this category. Are there any at this time? Mrs. Washington?
Vision Specialists, 7-122, is zero for fiscal year 2022. Could you give me a reason for that, and how would the needs of the students be addressed?
Mrs. Washington, could you direct me to the page?
Page 73, please.
There you go.
Vision Specialists, 7-122.
Isn't that a position we're covering through a contractor?
Contracted services.
Because we don't?
It is a contracted position.
That's, that's, that's what I thought, that's why I asked Ms. McCourt for that, and that's what I thought, thank you. And that would be the same for the physical therapists as well, 7-120.
Mr. Gerbien?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, please.
Are there any additional questions?
No.
Within the student personnel services, we have an increase of $1,660,000 or a 12.6% decrease for funding for negotiations as well. Are there any questions in this category? Yes, law is on for any questions.
Not for me.
No.
No.
No questions.
Moving on to Student Health Services, there is a requested increase of $22,000 or a 4.8% increase for the funding for negotiations as well, and there were no questions submitted in this category. Are there any questions at this time?
No, not for me.
No.
With the Student Services, sorry, Student Transportation, we do have a capacity on the line to assist in answering questions in this area. We have a rate increase of $453,931, Dr. Smith, thank you, representing a 2.5% increase. The highlights in this area include funding for negotiations, the contracted bus PVA increase, hourly contracted driver attendant rate increase, and a decrease in the fuel rate. We did decrease the fuel rate from 2.5 cents per gallon to, from the current budget of $3 per gallon. And Mrs. Weaver submitted a question in Student Transportation, the question is, do the school system still pay bus drivers or contractors at this time? Mr. Thompson?
Yes, currently, we're paying for all fixed costs in full, which is our PVA, which pays for the buses, our operations payment, and our stipend that was paid in full. For contractors, the variable cost for paying minimums of, which are 5.5 hours and 65 miles for maintenance. For virtual days, we're not paying anything for fuel that's not used on those days.
Thank you. An additional question was submitted by Mrs. Weaver, gas, where are the funds going since there is no gas being used for buses?
Yeah, currently, any of those funds that are, that were designated for fuel, they still remain in the transportation budget. We are using some of the funds to try to offset some of the costs as needed for potential PPE or for cleaning products that may be needed to help with our return to school items in the future. We've had some, purchased some in the fall, we anticipate probably having to purchase some in the spring as they come about. And, you know, keep in mind, you know, we keep anticipating and are hopeful that our students will be returning to school and will have the buses fully on the road, so we have, you know, expect to have those expenditures going out.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Clarifying that.
Questions from the board?
I don't have a question, but I am thrilled with the 4.75% increase for hourly bus drivers and for school bus attendants. That's fantastic.
Okay, Mr. Thompson, moving on to the operation of plant category, we have a requested increase of $503,092 or a 2.9% increase. The highlights include funding for the negotiated agreement as well as utilities, and we have included and used a fund balance of $78,850 to support vehicles. And we do have a few questions that were submitted by board members. The first question then comes from Mrs. Weaver, and I'm going to ask that Mr. Wood would respond to this. If the students are not at the school and it snows, will the system still pay for parking lots to be plowed? I know that we have teachers who still come in, but not sure if that will change if it will snow.
All right, the inter, yes, we still will do some snow removal, but the amount and the target of the snow removal will be dependent on the what employees are reporting during that particular snow event. The snow removal contract is basically an hourly contract, and each snow and weather event presents itself in different ways, times, temperatures, and that affects greatly how we respond. Generally speaking, when we just have staff that has to report, and there's a good chance that the snow will take care of itself through rain or temperatures, we only remove a path to the main office, some parking spaces, the main utility plants. But yeah, there is some level of snow removal. When students aren't there, we won't be removing student parking lots, bus lots, those uses.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. The next question, what comes from Mrs. Allen, and Dr. Smith, I'm going to ask that you respond to this one. On page 98 in the supplemental budget, rent, there's a notation of a use of St. Mary's writing for graduation. Can you elaborate on that?
No. We are, we are currently, in fact, we just had a meeting earlier this week to talk about graduation, and where, and how, and what that might be. Presently, we are not anticipating using St. Mary's College because we don't think we'll be in a position where we can have 4,500 people gather in one space. So we will, information will be forthcoming. We're talking now about planning optimistically for having commencement exercises hosted at each of our schools, and probably in an outdoor, in an outdoor manner in the stadiums, and we may have to break apart the graduating classes into sections. So there'd be like, so Chopticon would have an AM graduation group, a midday graduation group, and a PM graduation group, so that we can comply with whatever the executive order states for gathering people together in one cohorted place. So for all of that, we'll, we'll see what the expenses carry and what that might look like, but that's what we're currently planning on.
Great, thanks.
It is going to be, I believe, just as exciting as last May, where we have things changing up until the last and working with and gathering together, but I will tell you this, the class of 2021 will have commencement exercises, and they will certainly be memorable.
I have no doubt.
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I had no other questions submitted for the operation of plant. Ms. Carter and Mr. Wyatt are both on the line. Are there any other questions from the board?
No other questions.
I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the maintenance of plant category, we actually have a decrease reflected in this category of $230,49 or a 5% decrease. We have included funding for negotiations, however, we have removed all planned painting within this category. There were no questions that were submitted. Are there any questions at this time?
I don't have any.
Nope.
Thank you. Moving on to fixed charges, there is a requested increase of $275,951 or a 3.9% increase. This includes social security associated with negotiations, pension increase, a health insurance estimate of 5%, and general liability workers' compensation insurance increases. We received two questions in this category. The first was from Mrs. Weaver, and I believe Mrs. Weaver, that you answered your question on this earlier, and that was regarding how to dismiss employees and their families who had elective surgery that was deferred to this fiscal year.
You answered it during the board meeting.
Okay, thank you. And then the third question came from Mrs. Allen, asking about the charter school reflecting a $0 for their fixed charges for Group A workers' comp retirement and social security Medicare. We did lump that all into one line until we received the details of their budget.
Great, thank you.
Are there any additional questions within the fixed charges category?
No.
Moving on to Capitol Hill. We have a requested increase of $19,557 or a 2.5% increase, which includes funding for negotiations, which includes a use of fund balance of $150,000 dedicated towards building modifications. And I had received the phone questions from the Board of Education in this category. Are there any additional questions at this time?
No.
So that was our last budget category. Are there any overall or general questions that you'd like to ask before we move on?
I don't have any.
I don't have any questions.
No, I don't either. Thank you. Once again, it was incredibly thorough, and like I said, the notes section is just like my dream, so thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate all of the directors for attending today. Thank you so much for supporting. Fourth meeting, January 6, we will have the Board of Education public hearing on your budget.
Okay, and yeah, just to update everyone, during the, during the budget work session yesterday for the county commissioners, I think they just put in the placeholder of 109 million for us, and really didn't seem like they were going to make any movement on that until after they figured out what the legislature was doing with old harmless and Kerwin and the School Building Act or Build whatever helped.
Built to Learn.
Yeah, Built to Learn, the Senate Bill one that Senator Miller put in last year, so it seems like, you know, that's our, that's our placeholder right now. We'll have to see what, how it all falls out, so.
And Built to Learn is contingent on Kerwin passing, which is why it didn't go through last year, so we will see what it looks like. last year, so we will see what it looks like.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Everyone have a good holiday, and we will see you on the flip side of the calendar here.
See you in 2021.